Excuse me, I have to remember that. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the July 26th Planning Commission meeting. We'll start off by doing the pledge to the allegiance of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberate and just as all.
Well, I must say it's nice to be back in person. Been awhile.
Zach, can you let them know that I'm here through Zoom?
Oh, sure. Yep, they can hear you Glenn.
Okay.
Okay, welcome Glenn.
That's why I said home.
So our first item is review and approval of the minutes for June 28th. Does anyone have any comments or questions about the minutes? If not, do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion for the June 20th meeting.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion by Joyce and a second by Joe to approve the minutes of June 28th. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They're unanimously approved. Do we have any public comment tonight? Okay, no public comment. And we'll move right on to the agenda items. First item, there's three old business items concerning the Emmitsburg East Industrial Park two. And the first item is the Emmitsburg East Industrial Park forest delineation plan. So take it away Zach.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not going to go over the summary again, as this was on our agenda last month. But I will speak about the changes to the plan from the June 20, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. So they remove forest removal reduction from 1.28 acres to 0.56 acres. Number two, forests to be retained increase from 1.38 acres to 2.11 acres. Number three, reforestation reduction from 2.56 acres to 1.12 acres. For removal of the Property Owner Association POA lot. And five, increase the size of lot five from 5.1 acres to 8.6 acres. And number six, increase the size of lot six from 4.8 acres to 12.4 acres. The developers still proposing to pay the fee in lieu instead of conducting the required forest mitigation on site, which was recommended by staff and by the mayor. Timeline as usual, agency reviews and our suggested motion. I do want to. Alright, sorry about that. We want to. We suggest to move conditionally to approve the Emmitsburg East Industrial Forest to forest delineation plan with the following five conditions. Mr. Chairman, do you want me to go through those or? Sure, they did a really good job cleaning up the plans from the last meeting. So number one, just to add the wastewater treatment plant to the vicinity map. Two, include statement about critical habitat provided from a letter from the state. Three, this three, four, and five is typical in every plan. Planning Commission approval is conditioned upon acceptance of an improvement plat in conformance with the town of Emmitsburg and all other governmental agency requirements. Four, no permits will be issued until all regulatory requirements have been met, including but not limited to adequate public facilities ordinance, forestation, water sewer, etc. And five, the developer shall pay such fees that are charged from time to time by the town of Emmitsburg for further reviews or permits as may be required concerning the proposed development. So we are recommending approval of this, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you Zach. I just have one question for kind of clarification where it designates the Palestrine farmed wetland and the 2.5 foot buffer around it. Does that actually mean that farming is not taking place in that wetland? And I guess I'm directing that to use that.
So that is a type of wetland delineation?
Right.
If I'm right, Matt or Mike, sorry. Yeah, so no farming will be taking place there, but it's just a separate name of wetland.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify because it calls it Palestrine farmed wetland, but it's now not actually being farmed in that wetland space.
Correct. Can you go to the microphone, please, and just push that one button there?
Good evening, Mike Battern with Fox and Associates.
Thank you.
Also, Dan Reaver, the owner Emmitsburg East Industrial Park LLC. And also I'll mention Bruce Dean here in case there's any legal questions. But Dan, the owner is saying that there is farming going on.
So what's the purpose of the buffer around the wetland?
Well, it's just typical for a wetland area to have a buffer. It just, you know, for disturbance and things like that. Ground disturbance where you're actually construct, doing any kind of type of construction.
But you are able to farm that?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Just a question, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, so we're talking about that. That's a just current land depression that he's farming, that it has no fragmity or any growth that the state considers wetland that can't be disturbed?
Well, that was actually the delineation that's shown on our plan was done by another consultant when they were doing the Rutter's project. Due to the proximity of the Rutter's project across flat run on our side, it actually doesn't even show up on the national well inventory on the website. So it was something that was delineated and, you know, since it was already delineated, we're showing it.
Okay. Any other questions or comments about the delineation plan?
I had one, Mr. Chair. Actually, I have a two-part question directed to Zach. And this is specific to the first three items for all business. Because of there's the one item of fee in lieu, I see that the applicant is taking advantage of our fee in lieu policy. Have we decided what we were going to be applying that to the town or is that to be determined at a later date?
Yeah, that's to be determined at a Board of Commissioners meeting. However, the mayor and town staff want to plant street trees throughout the different developments.
Okay.
Which that's a permitted use.
I remember that discussion. I went and tried to jog my memory there.
Sure.
For clarifying that. And the second part of my question is procedurally. The next step in the process, it's not going to the Board of Commissioners. Therefore, I would be allowed to vote this evening and not abstain, correct?
That's correct.
In fact, everything tonight it looks like I could accept the very last item, new business number three.
That's correct.
Just wanted to get that out of the way now.
Sure.
Thanks. That's all I had. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Joe. Any other comments or questions about the delineation plan? Okay, if not, do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve to conditionally approve the Emmitsburg East Industrial Park two forest delineation plan. With the conditions set forth in our memo.
Okay, yeah, Zach read the conditions, so I don't think we need to read them through again.
Good.
And Joyce, did you second that?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to conditionally approve the Emmitsburg East Industrial Park two forest delineation plan with the following conditions that's outlined in the staff memo. So all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous then approval. So we're going to move on to the second item of old business. The preliminary forest conservation plan.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'll briefly just discuss this as it's very similar with the previous. In accordance with Town Code Chapter 1648 Forest Conservation, the reforestation requires 1.12 acres. A forestation required 1.85 acres for a total of 2.97 acres. And as always, there is our timeline, agency reviews. And then our suggested motion is to conditionally approve Eastern Emmitsburg East Industrial Park to preliminary forest conservation plan with the following conditions. Number one, again, just a quick fix in the vicinity map to include the wastewater treatment plant. Two, the property owner shall enter into long-term binding protective agreement with the town in order to provide protection for areas of forest conservation in accordance with Town Code 164890B5. And the town will provide applicant the agreement template upon request. And then the three others that are included in all of our reports. And that's my presentation.
Okay, thank you Zach. Do any of the commissioners have any comments or questions about the conservation plan? I just have a couple of comments and a few questions. First, I'd just like to say that although I would have preferred that more a forestation be done on site, particularly along flat run, I'm very appreciative that you're conserving more of the old growth forest. And I do thank you for that. So a couple of questions to follow up. I see on the plat that lots five and six have been expanded to include the area that was once part of the Property Owner Association outlet. And that's where the forestation was to take place. So assuming you sell those plats five and six to other people at some point in time. And that area is also in a FEMA 100 year floodplain. So assuming you sell that property to other owners, what are they allowed to do in that area then? I guess.
Mike Battern again with Fox. Excuse me, they won't be able to do anything in that forest easement. So that existing forest will be in an easement and it'll be a recorded document and part of the plat as well, so.
Okay, I'm not talking about the existing forest. I'm talking about the other area of the flat area that's being farmed that's in the FEMA floodplain.
Well, within the floodplain, they won't be able to do, I mean, as far as building or any type of construction without any type of permit, so.
So you said without a permit. So are you saying construction can occur?
Through MDE or or like that. I mean, the way this parcel, well, lot five and six are laid out and the topography of that, I I find it unlikely that there's going to be any type of construction within that floodplain area. We did some preliminary planning and design of lot five and six as far as grading. There's going to be quite a bit of fill that's going to be required to make those lots. And I mean, it's going to be tying out prior to the floodplain. So and I don't think Dan, the owner, has any intentions of, you know, making any type of disturbance within the floodplain.
Okay.
Yeah, they have to get permits through MDE and also I think the United States Army Corps of Engineers. So it's a pretty intense.
Process.
Yeah.
But it could continue to be farmed. Yes.
If I guess the owners decide to do, I mean, I'm not a wetland expert, so I don't. I really can't comment on as far as the limits of what they can do and what they can't do. So like I said, the wetland delineations was delineated by a different consultant, another consultant.
Well, I'm also talking about the FEMA 100 year plane.
Right. And I mean, there's going to be quite a work involved to even get a permit. If anyone, any one of those, you know, lot owners would decide to do any type of construction through MDE and the Army Corps.
Okay.
So.
Um. So you can stay there just a minute. So not to jump ahead, but I see on the preliminary plat that there's a proposed stream restoration easement that's shown on the plat. But what is happening there with that?
That was a requirement for the Town Code. And we added that.
Yeah, so we added that. Well, it's actually been in the code for a long time. We increased a little bit, I think in 2019. That's for future MS4 projects, municipal separate storm sewer system projects in the future. So we don't have to basically, you know, ask for permission to do a stream restoration project. We already have the easement in place, so we can go ahead and push forward with that.
So there's nothing actually on the books to be doing the restoration? It's just an easement in case you ever do do it?
That's correct.
Okay. So there's a thin line of trees along a portion of flat run that doesn't meet the definition of a forest. Is there any way to get assurances that that thin strip of trees wouldn't be cut down?
I guess I'd be up to the day. I don't know what's allowed, what was not allowed within that 20-foot buffer restoration easement, if anything.
Yeah, is that within the, so it's within the stream restoration easement? But it's not.
Maybe and some may not be. It's a little hard to tell for sure.
I think what he's referring to, I think on both sides of the stream, there's actually a row of trees. It's just a single row of trees.
Yeah.
That does not meet the definition of forest. That's what he's trying to.
Yeah, I highly doubt that the town would ever remove those trees unless we're doing a serious stream restoration project. I don't, I don't speak in Dan's behalf, but I don't think he'd want to tear those out either.
I don't know what the, what the point would be to tear those out, to cut those down.
Yeah, there would only be if the town was going to do a stream restoration project and, you know, we would put more trees in on its behalf.
Okay.
But we can't put the long-term binding agreement in there because then it's going to mess us up for our stream restoration easement.
Gotcha. Okay. Okay, I think that's all I had. Anything else from anybody? Any questions, comments? If not, do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, it's the Emmitsburg East Industrial Park two.
Can we do the conditions as well?
Conditions and.
Okay, we have a motion to conditionally approve the Emmitsburg East Industrial Park two preliminary forest conservation plan with the outlined conditions. Do I hear a second? Joyce, second.
I'll second a motion.
We have another second from above. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Did you say aye Glenn?
Aye, sorry, yes.
Okay. So it's been approved unanimously.
So help me out real quick, the name. Mark, sorry, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I can't, I can't remember the name of the new associate member of the board. Can you help me out with him?
Kevin.
Kevin, that's sorry.
Sure.
Thank you, sorry.
You're welcome. So our third item of business under old business is the preliminary subdivision plat for Emmitsburg East Industrial Park two.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Page one's the same thing. We already went over. Page two is the same thing until it gets down to the suggested motion. I do want to remove item number two from the conditions. Item number two, we spoke with our attorney and she said that's fine.
Move item number two.
Oh, yeah. So we're recommending to conditionally approve the Emmitsburg East Industrial Park two preliminary subdivision plat with the following conditions. One, again, the vicinity map upgrade and then the three standard comments. And that's everything, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any of the commissioners have any comments or questions?
I had none.
Okay, I don't have any. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'd like to make a motion to conditionally approve the Emmitsburg East Industrial Park two preliminary subdivision plat with the conditions that were highlighted in our town memo.
And excluding number two?
Excluding number two.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to conditionally approve the Emmitsburg East Industrial Park two preliminary subdivision with the outlined four conditions. Number two had been taken out. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's approved unanimously.
Mike, Mike and Dan, will you be submitting on Friday? Okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Take care of that back Dean, Mr. Dean, Bruce. Okay, we'll move on to new business. The first item of business involves the Village Liquors and Plaza Inn Forest Stand Delineation Plan. These are wrapped together.
Yeah, we wrap these together, but if we could.
The Forest Stand Delineation Plan and the preliminary.
Yes.
Forest Conservation Plan.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the Village Liquors and Plaza Inn project. We're really excited about this moving forward. Finally get some development on Silo Hill Parkway, so that's awesome. The applicant is R. Lee Royer and Associates, owner Pradeep and Gopi Sani. Our plan type forest delineation and preliminary and final forest conservation plans files file numbers 2021-9 and 2021-10. There's the property tax ID. It's the property address is 201 Silo Hill Parkway. And the zoning district is the general commercial B2. The proposed projects consist of creating a 6,300 square foot liquor store on the first floor and 20-unit hotel on the second and third floors. The proposed facility will include 39 parking spaces. The applicant is proposing to pay into the town's forest conservation fund in order to meet the site's forest conservation requirements. The proposed use of the subject property is consistent with the town of Emmitsburg zoning ordinance and also the comprehensive plan. There's our timeline, agency reviews and comments. Town of Emmitsburg staff has reviewed the plan and has issued the following comment. These are not meant to be all-inclusive. Additional comments or suggested conditions may be presented as staff reviews future plans of the proposed project. It is staff's understanding that the owner may consider to further develop the lot in the future. Therefore, it is recommended that the applicant perform a delineation of forest conservation calculations on the entire lot at this time. This would change the requirements in the fall, to the following. Planting required would be 0.30 acres or 13,068 square feet. And you multiply that by 30, 0.305 per square foot. And this would equal $3,985.74 for the fee in lieu. A new forest stand delineation and preliminary final forest conservation plan will be required when the future development comes to fruition if the entire tract is not completed at this time. So at, for the suggested motion, we're requesting to move to conditionally approve the Village Liquors and Plaza Inn Forest Stand Delineation and preliminary final forest conservation plans with the following conditions. Under the zoning ordinance, the plan currently says motel. But however, motels consist of less than 10 fully furnished guest rooms and hotels and hotel consists of 10 or more fully furnished guest room suites or a combination there of units. And that's in accordance with the definitions of motel and hotel. Since the applicant is proposing 20, the project is considered a hotel. So the word motel must be changed to hotel for current and for future plans. Under Forest Conservation Ordinance, number two, simplified forest delineation plan cannot be approved by the Planning Commission because the property is not designated to be under a long-term protection agreement in accordance with Town Code 164860D2. Applicants shall change simplified forest delineation plan wording throughout the plan to forest delineation plan. This is just a technicality and it will not significantly alter the plan. Number two, include the proposed construction timetable. Number four, include proposed stockpile. Number five, the note planting required 0.20 acres or 8,492, etc., etc. Shall be changed. It's my understanding that applicant's now going to do it for the entire site. So it actually include the new number, which we can change right now of So note number five should be updated accordingly. And number six. So $3,985.74. Number seven, include statement about critical habitat provided by letter from the state. Eight, add statement indicating species and size of trees in the boundary shown for existing tree cover that does not meet the definition of forest cover. Nine, add note to the, that 100-year floodplain does not occur in the project area. 10, add a soil boundary to the legend. 11, add existing utilities and other lime work to legend. 12, clearly identify the parcel boundary and add to legend. Add 13, include the owner's phone number on the plan. 14, add signature for mayor and planning commission chairman. And then our three administrative items that we include now in every plan. And that's my presentation.
Okay, thank you Zach.
And Mr. Sani is here and also Lee, if you have any questions.
Okay.
Do you have any comments you wish to make?
We've gotten those, there's comments from Zach and I think you have all new plans to show.
I've never received the plans.
You haven't received a plan?
No.
Well, you were, I left them at the door when you were off and said for you to pick them up.
The updated plans? When did you drop?
Updated plan.
When did you drop them off?
I don't know, a day or so after you sent me those comments.
Yeah, I've never received them, unfortunately. Hopefully no one threw them away out there.
As you weren't here and we had called you, at least my secretary said she left you a message to come pick them up. But I didn't know you didn't get them because we addressed all those problems.
We have to submit the first set of plans that you gave us. We have to submit that to the Planning Commission. So even if you did drop them off and someone put them on my desk and somehow it got misplaced, we still have to go off of those plans.
Even though you sent me comments and I revised everything.
Yes, we have to have 30 days to review.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
It's not a big deal. I mean.
So maybe you'll find these plans somewhere.
I definitely.
You'll have new ones tomorrow, I'll put it that way. So you had to call me, are you in?
Tomorrow?
Yes.
What, it's tomorrow, Tuesday? Yep, I'm in.
Okay, can you check and let me know?
I definitely don't have them.
You definitely don't have?
Hundred percent.
Okay, you have them in the morning. How many copies do you need? I forget.
We'll talk after the meeting.
Alright, I'm sorry, gentlemen and ladies. I thought these were all addressed. Well, I know they're all addressed.
Okay.
Sorry you don't have a copy.
So you have no problem with them then?
No, 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 huh, no. I know, yeah, we definitely want it for the whole site.
Yeah.
At the time we submitted this, we didn't, we were advised to do it with the whole site. So yes, all that has been changed. All the numbers have been changed. Everything's been done.
Okay.
And it is for the whole site and so.
Alrighty.
I have a question then, Mr. Chair. So if we're, if we conditionally approve tonight and new plans are received, we would still be voting on that or because we conditionally approve tonight? And if those conditions are met, do we still have to vote?
Yes.
Subsequent plan?
You don't have to vote again. So you'll just vote tonight, just as any other plan. And then we'll approve it administratively with all these changes, as we always do.
I mean, just my limited expertise being on the planning commission, it seems that mostly the conditions are just like little things, you know, a box here.
Exactly.
It wasn't any.
Exactly.
Anything to hold up any.
Yeah, and anytime we conditionally approve something, it doesn't have to come back to us.
Okay, good.
It's taken care of administratively.
Sorry for that little.
No, no, no.
Mix up with the plans there. Okay, I mean, I'm comfortable in reviewing this, so.
Any other comments or questions?
One question. So on the back of the property existing now, there's the ornamental trees that line the back line of.
Yes.
The houses. So are they going to be moved and new trees put in or you're just not going to touch the existing?
No, just not going to touch them.
Okay. Additional, additional buffer will be required when you review the site plan. So we'll, we'll get into that at our next meeting.
Anything else? Any other questions, comments? If not, would someone like to make a motion?
And this will just be the, for the forest delineation plan. Even though they're on one document, there's still two different requirements.
Okay, so this is just for the forest delineation. Well, the, well, the motion talks about the delineation and preliminary final forest conservation plan. Your, your.
Okay.
Suggested motion.
Yeah, do them separate if you could with the same conditions.
Same conditions of both?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. You guys got that?
Okay, okay, I'll make a motion to conditionally approve Village Liquors and Plaza Forest Stand Delineation.
And, and with the uh, conditions. With the outline conditions.
Following zone ordinance.
Well, you don't need to read them, but.
Yeah, okay.
It just has. Do I hear a second? Joyce, second. So we have a motion to conditionally approve. The Village Liquors and Plaza Inn Forest Stand Delineation with the outlined conditions. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
It's unanimously approved. So. There's nothing different to go over for the.
Exactly.
Forest conservation plan, we just need another motion.
Please.
I'll, I'll make that motion um, to approve, to conditionally approve the Village Liquors and Plaza. And preliminary final forest conservation plan with the conditions that were highlighted this evening.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
So we have a motion to conditionally approve the Village Liquors and Plaza Inn Forest. Uh, preliminary and far, excuse me. The preliminary and final forest conservation plan with the outline conditions. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? It's unanimously approved. Okay, well, I guess that's it for Village Liquors and.
Are you submitting tonight for? Next month for the site plan and you'll be dropping that off later? Got it, thank you. Nothing. Okay, thank you. Correct. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
No, we're good, we'll, we'll talk tomorrow if you need to, but just drop off the plans. Just drop them off on Friday with the other stuff. Yeah, yep, then we'll get it all approved. It's up to you. It's gonna take a while for us to get it signed, the mayor's on um, vacation right now. Yeah, don't hurry. Yep. See ya. Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, see ya.
Okay, then our final item of business is the proposed ordinance two thousand twenty-one dash twelve, a zoning text amendment application file number two thousand twenty-one dash eleven.
And just to clarify for that mistake. I know there wasn't a mistake on staff's behalf, uh, basically if they drop off a plan, it has to be within thirty days.
Mm-hmm.
In order for staff to have time to review it. And when, once we receive it literally the next day or that day, we submitted to all of our agencies for review. So we wouldn't re-review another plan if he did drop it off.
Right.
Which we didn't receive it anyway, so.
Okay.
Just want to clarify on staff's behalf.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, this is proposed ordinance twenty-one dash twelve. I was hoping that the applicant was going to be here, but looks, are they on Zoom, Amy?
I am.
Brian?
Can you? Or Jeff? You hear me? Can you hear me?
We hear someone.
That's Jeff Holtzinger, I'm here, I thought we were supposed to attend by Zoom, so.
That's okay, thank you.
I'm on Zoom.
Okay, so the applicants Brian and Susan Reaver requesting a zoning text amendment to town code, uh, section seventeen eight oh eight one ninety conversions of garages, sheds, outbuildings or other accessory structures. The amendment if passed would allow the current and future applicants the opportunity to apply for variances from the Board of Appeals. In order to convert garages, sheds, outbuildings and other non-residential structures into residential dwelling units. There's our timeline at their meeting on July twelfth, two thousand twenty-one, the mayor and board of commissioners voted to forward. Ordinance twenty-one dash twelve to the planning commission for the mandatory review and recommendation. Uh, there is the town code requirement that requires the planning commission to review. Within thirty days. And then there's also the suggested motions, um, town staff recommends approving, recommending approval of ordinance twenty-one dash twelve as we feel that. Any section within the zoning ordinance should be able to go to the Board of Appeals. And that's my presentation.
Okay, thank you Zach. So what part does Mr. Holtzinger have in this?
So Jeff is the attorney for the applicant.
Oh, okay. Did you wish to make any comments, Mr. Holtzinger?
Sure, um, first for the record, Jeff Holtzinger on behalf of the applicants. And um, I think Zach covered a waterfront, but this basically just allows the Reavers to move forward to the next level of review. To go to the uh, Board of Zoning Appeals in this case because their, their existing building doesn't meet all the setback requirements. So we would respectfully request that you uh, give us a favorable recommendation, I guess back to the. Um, the mayor and council, um, so we can move forward to the, the next step to allow this, the use is. The use they propose is an allowed use in the village center zoning. Um, but we would still need to, to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Um, to seek, uh, I guess some modification or um. Relief from, I think at least one of the setbacks because the building is existing, has been existing for a very long time. Um, and so we, we don't quite meet one of the setbacks.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions by the commissioners?
Yes.
Joe?
So if we pass this, this evening or for, wait a minute, I, let me rephrase that. If we approve it, then we'd go to the Board of Commissioners for final approval.
That's correct, that they're August second meeting.
And then at that time, the applicant, I'm assuming would then um, get the ball and process for the Board of Appeals hearing.
That's correct.
So we still don't have a guarantee that that could. Be granted by the Board of Appeals.
Correct.
As, as. Followed out.
Okay, that's correct.
But currently they can't even get that far.
Exactly, it's really interesting, I've never actually seen something like this in a zoning code. So usually, you know, all the time, somebody has the opportunity to apply for a variance, um, for any section of the zoning ordinance.
I'm glad Zach's mentioned that because I had never seen that as well.
I think it's a really old requirement, okay, so.
So, so the issue is mostly an issue of the setback? Otherwise they. Otherwise they could do this accessory dwelling unit?
Mm-mm, so currently the code states that any former non-residential structure. So say, for example, what is this Reds Tavern on one thirty-five Chesapeake Avenue?
Uh, this is the most recent.
That's the most recent, but say for example, also the antique mall, you know, went out of business for whatever reason and wanted to convert to apartments.
Oh.
Under the code, they current, they couldn't do that.
Okay.
Any non-residential structure.
Okay.
So that's one thing I did mention to the commissioners, if, if, you know, not just Chesapeake Avenue, but. The antique mall or any non-residential structure. Um, within a zone that permits residential dwellings would be able to convert, so for example, if you're okay seeing apartments at the. Antique mall, this is something you're going to want to approve, but it's something you're not going to want to see there ever. Don't approve it.
Okay.
But that's just something to think of, you know, more broadly, not just the Chesapeake Avenue.
Hmm, yeah. That was my main. Obviously, I'm abstaining this evening because it is going to the board, my main concern is when it does go to the board. I can't speak for anyone else on the Board of Commissioners. I'm, I'm afraid that maybe some of them might not want it. The opportunity for any applicant then, this, this specific instance to go to the Board of Appeals. It's just odd that this whole thing, you know, the old code, the code was written in such a way that it was not allowed. Sorry, kind of just thinking here, I like to think out loud, so.
Yeah, I think.
If I, if I might keep in mind, when you go to the Board of Zoning Appeals to get a variance or a special exception. There are conditions that are pretty well laid out. Uh, that you have to meet, so in order to get approval from the Board of Zoning Appeals. An applicant would have to, to jump through several hoops. And would have the burden of proof of establishing that you meet those conditions and they're, they're pretty. You know, they're probably laid out well in the Emmitsburg Town Code, but there is, there's case law that really sets forth. What you have to establish in uh, those type of cases as well, so. It's not going to be a walk in the park to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Um, I think that's an excellent example Zach made, but. And any applicant, if they, there were, you know, can problems meeting those criteria. Then on a case by case basis, they could be turned down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holtzinger. So uh, just a comment, it somewhat relates to this, um, not entirely, but um. In, in my role on the Frederick County Affordable Housing Council, I helped develop legislation for the county. Uh, to allow accessory dwelling units is what we were calling them, which doesn't apply to the, the antique mall, but it would apply to other. Other type of buildings in someone's backyard, say a garage or whatever. So, so we developed legislation to allow by right, um, you know, accessory dwelling units, um. Because it helps provide affordable housing. And after we got that approved in the county, we've been working since two thousand eighteen to have the city of Frederick also. Do this as well, and they've been going through that whole process this whole year. So I, I guess what I'm trying to say, I, I certainly think it's a good idea to allow more residential. Properties and maybe situations that aren't uh. Aren't typical perhaps, but uh, would allow, you know, different options for people to have. Uh, residential dwelling units uh, in, in garages or sheds or build new ones or whatever. In places where they aren't now. So I'm all for this.
Just question for Zach, is the example you gave shocking, so it's one thing to allow somebody to put something in, you know, like a garage, one or two housing units. It's a whole other beast to say, I'm putting in forty-two. Like at the antique mall. Is there a way to draw a difference between those two or if we pass this, the door's open?
Yeah, the door is open, um, they will have to obviously meet the subdivision requirements and the zoning requirements, the density requirements uh, per dwelling. And so I couldn't tell you if it's gonna, if the antique mall would allow ten or a hundred. Cause I don't know their, their density, but yeah, it does open the floodgates, um, again, just like as Mr. Holtzinger said. If there's any circumstances where they have to apply for variances, there are very strict rules that they have to abide by. But in circumstance, they don't have to apply for variances, then it's basically just a simple. Uh, well, you have to go through a site plan approval, so the planning commission will review it if it's five or more units. We just added that to the code in two thousand twenty, just so you guys have authority to see big, larger multi-unit scale development, um, but. You know. It opened, yeah, it does, sure. There are certain things, yeah.
Any other comments, questions? So that there's four options laid out here, um, recommend to approve with comment, recommend approval without comment. Recommend denial with comment or recommend denial without comment. And I, I take it the staff is recommending approval?
Yes.
So Joe is abstaining on this one, correct, so someone else is going to have to make a motion, either Kevin or Joyce.
Okay. I'll move to recommend approval of ordinance twenty-one twelve without comment.
Would someone like to make a second?
I'll second.
Okay, and Joyce made a second. So, so we have a motion to recommend approval, proposed ordinance twenty-one dash twelve without comment. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? It passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jeff.
And.
Mr. Blanchard, for the record, I did abstain.
Oh, that's right. Uh, yes, Mr. Commissioner Ritz, I have that, I have that.
Thank, thank you.
No problem.
So do we have any other business?
Yes, we will have a meeting on August thirtieth. Zach, always. Very busy year, um, this will be the Village Liquors and the Hotel Plaza Inn site plan.
Okay.
And that's it.
If there's no other business, uh, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, thank you Glenn, is there a second? We are adjourned, thank you everyone.
Mr. Chair, I'm assuming Mr. Franklin's absent today.